Kara Ben.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Sonal Kokarni.
Yeah.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, so as I stated, we are going to start with emails and then in-person public comment. We will move into our president's report and then our esteemed new superintendent's first report. We will move through our consent vote agenda. Consent vote is the things that we have discussed at length in committee that don't require any further discussion or place on consent. After the consent vote, we will hear from our chairman Jim Batson on the program and personnel committee on the items that we reviewed tonight earlier in committee. Same thing for facilities and finance. Our chairperson, Casey Rooney, will review what we discussed in committee. We'll have an update from ISB from Jim Batson and on seat all, if any, from Kara Benjamin. We'll discuss future agenda items and then we will adjourn. So with that in mind, we're going to start with the emailed public comment. And I am going to note when we reach three minutes, I'm going to ask to move on. I think it's only fair to have the same limits for emailed public comments that we ask for people who are in person to observe. So whenever you're ready.
Thank you. The first letter we have tonight is from Gwen Jansen. Thank you for serving our district. I recognize the enormous commitment you've all made and appreciate how difficult it can be to face the decisions that have been thrust upon you and the resulting community backlash. Please do not read this letter as being filled with anger because it's not. I come from a place of genuine concern and curiosity for how we safely move forward. I'll apologize in advance for the length of this email. I've highlighted the most pressing concerns in red in case the volume of emails you're receiving prevents you from doing a careful reading of the entire message. I've put my questions to Dr. Herman in bold. When I received Dr. Herman's email last Thursday, I was quite surprised. Given the board's steadfast commitment to following the guidance and providing layered mitigation last year, I didn't expect a departure from it this year. Although the letter attempted to explain how the plan to encourage masks could safely meet the goals set by the CDC, IDPH, and ISBE, the plan ignores the guidance that unvaccinated students should be masked. If the goal is to keep students learning in person, which I believe is the direction provided by the state superintendent, the D-128 plan leaves a lot of opportunity to fail at meeting that goal. In light of the increased transmittability and severity of the Delta variant, here are my concerns. Realistically, encouraging masks without requiring them is likely result, will likely result in little to no wearing of masks by students and perhaps even many staff members. Although I can appreciate the difficulty that might come in enforcement of a mask policy, we'd be much closer to compliance with a mask requirement than we'll ever get with just asking people to care about others. Sad, I know, but behaviors in our own community the last 18 months have shown how true it is. Breakthrough infections of vaccinated people are occurring more often with the Delta variant than we've previously, than we've seen previously. The lack of masks means each and every unvaccinated student isn't just assuming risk for themselves. They're putting all students at risk of infection and many missed school days. Educationally, this will be tragic. 10 to 14 consecutive missed days is nothing short of a significant negative impact. What is the plan for those who have to stay home, whether symptomatic or not? Will teachers be teaching concurrently if they have a student who's quarantined through no fault of their own? If not, how are students supposed to learn the missed material? Given the likelihood that the lack of masks requires greater numbers to quarantine than would have happened with masks, this could very well impact each and every student at some point this year, perhaps even more than once. How does this accomplish the goal of keeping student learning in person all year? How will this provide the quality education our students deserve from this very high-ranking district? Just as the board acknowledged last year, and the majority of board did not turn over, our students come home to families. Many of our students have siblings at home who are too young to receive the vaccine. D-128's lack of mask policy creates risk for those siblings who then create risk for their peers in the feeder schools. The exponential effect could cripple this community and land us all back in remote learning.
Mary, we are at the three-minute limit.
Okay.
And I will note that the board will receive that to read. So even though we're not reading it publicly at the meeting, the board will have the chance to review.
Yes. Okay. Our next message is from Kristin Cresswell Isberg. The summer is flying and unfortunately, a lot is changing on the COVID front. The new Delta variant is now the predominant strain of COVID infecting Americans today. Over the past 14 days, we have seen in our zip code 60048, an increase in cases of 280% from the previous 14 days. Almost every single state in the United States is seeing the same trend. Most likely, this is due to multiple factors, including the Delta variant, Fourth of July celebrations, and the general trend for people in our communities to be unmasked in public places regardless of vaccination status. When classes start in the fall, we will once again be faced with large numbers of individuals in indoor spaces. Unlike last year, there are no virtual options, so all students will be in the building. While a significant number of individuals who are over 11 will be vaccinated, there are students who are either unable to get the vaccination because of health concerns or live with caregivers who do not choose to vaccinate their minor charges. Many of these high school students also go home to families with children under 12 years of age and include vulnerable adults. Infection with the Delta variant results in viral loads 1,000 times the viral load found in the original wild variant that we saw last year. It is one of the most infectious viruses on the planet at this time. To protect our students and family while we wait for approval of vaccination of our younger family members, we should be following the guidelines of the American Academy of Pediatrics and requiring all students and staff to mask while indoors at school this fall. I realize the CDC has indicated that vaccinated individuals are at little risk of severe disease and death from this virus, even the Delta variant. However, they are not immune to mild or moderate cases and the potential to spread it to others, more vulnerable and unvaccinated individuals. Long haul COVID is real and life-altering for many. I have spoken with a significant number of people who know personally of vaccinated individuals still falling ill with COVID and spreading it to members of their vaccinated family. I believe future studies will bear this out. As we are all aware, students learn best in the classroom. Illinois is no longer facilitating remote learning through its public school system, except under very specific circumstances. That leaves concerned parents and students with no options other than to attend classes in person. It is our responsibility to make sure that the learning environment we offer is as safe as we can make it for all of our students. With the current situation with the Delta variant, that means we should be willing to mask up to protect one another and the children who are unable to be vaccinated at this time.
That was exactly three minutes.
Oh, all right. The next one is from Kathy Murray. In the email that was sent three days ago, it stated that mask use is strongly recommended for students who are not fully vaccinated. The CDC guidelines are to require all vaccinated people to wear a mask. I urge you to follow the CDC guidelines to protect all students and their families. The school should track who is and who is not fully vaccinated. The school should assume a student isn't fully vaccinated unless the student can prove otherwise. Also mentioned in this email is requiring students in co-curricular activities to be screened weekly. I would urge you to do this for all students more frequently and in particular, ones who are either not vaccinated or not fully vaccinated. Thank you for your consideration. The next one is from Kim Atkroyd. Thank you for the opportunity to.
So Mrs. Atkroyd is present and you prefer to address us. And we had received that earlier, so I have read that. Thank you for submitting it, so we had a chance to look at it beforehand and we'll wait until you can give your own public comment. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The next message is from Alexander Niznik. In the recent email, the school communicated that face masks, face masks use will be strongly recommended for students who are not fully vaccinated. According to the CDC guidelines, it is required that all unvaccinated people to wear a mask. I urge you to follow the CDC guidelines to protect all students and their families. The school should assume a student isn't fully vaccinated unless the student can prove otherwise. Thank you for your consideration. And the next one is from Steve St. Louis.
So would you like us to hold off so that you can just do your comment publicly?
Okay, okay. Thank you. We'll see who else is here. The next one is from Elizabeth Kinnahan Schaefer. Nope. My name is Elizabeth Kinnahan Schaefer, and I have a child in District 70 and another in District 128 in Libertyville. I'm writing to voice my opposition to our public schools, including culturally responsive teaching, critical race theory, and comprehensive sexual education in the school curriculum. The state of Illinois is losing residents at a significant rate. We are paying very high taxes, mostly for schools, that are incredibly mismanaged and many of us are not being heard, respected, or represented. Taxation without representation. I will not sit by silently while taxpayer dollars are being spent hiring political activists for made-up positions with titles such as Director of Diversity and Inclusion or Equity and Diversity Coaches. What does that even mean? What type of qualifications does a person need for such a position? What is their salary? What are their daily duties, tasks, and responsibilities? In other words, what will they do all day? No one can answer that question. I love this country and believe the vast majority of Americans are incredibly tolerant and fair-minded people. This is not true of the individuals calling themselves promoters of diversity and inclusion. Over and over, these people are being exposed for the hate-filled extremists they are. They hate white people, they hate this country, and they are completely intolerant of anyone who doesn't think the way they do. They recklessly accuse others of being racist. Should that person have a different point of view? They have an agenda to divide and influence impressionable young people. I want those woke individuals kept away from my children. I don't agree with their divisive, toxic message. Don't our children have enough stress and negativity in their lives already? There's nothing worse than teaching children that who they are and their future opportunities are predetermined by their skin color, not their efforts and hard work. I will also be opting my children out of any comprehensive sexual education being taught. I have looked at this content and curricula, and all I can think is this country has literally gone crazy. How can this extremely sensitive and inappropriate subject matter be taught to innocent children in a public school setting? How can this be happening? Have you all lost your minds? I am vehemently opposed to publicly funded schools promoting any political agenda to innocent children. There should not even be a discussion. Parents are not being heard or respected by the lunatics in Springfield who pass these bills, nor by the teachers' union, nor by the school board. We will not surrender our rights to teach our own values to our children on these sensitive topics, nor will we be undermined by left-wing ideologues.
For three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next message will be sent to the board. It was anonymous.
The person asked that it not be read publicly?
Yes. The following one is from Kristin Christensen. Please follow the science and keep masks optional. Our kids have suffered enough. Please give them some normalcy to their high school life. Don't make our kids live in fear. The risk of COVID death isn't even close to car accidents and suicide in their age group. I pray you look at the science in this situation. Thank you. This message is from Kim Bissing. I want to thank Dr. Herman and the board for following science and the CDC and allowing parents a choice to mask their children in the coming school year. It is time to get them back. This is from Kami Van Dickshorn. I am in full support of making masks optional for the coming year. I do not favor, excuse me, I am not in favor of making them mandatory. This is from Kirsten Griffith. I'm just sending this email asking that we have masks as optional for students and teachers in the upcoming 2021-22 school year. Regardless of vaccine status with both students and teachers, I'm asking you that you leave it up to the individual households if they choose to wear masks or not. Thank you so much. This is from Nicole Noonan. Wanted to say thank you and give support for Dr. Herman's statement on making masks optional for the coming school year. I think this serves both groups as well. I'm sorry, I think this serves both groups as if someone feels uncomfortable, they can wear one. Thank you. This is from Joni Sowers. We are very excited about the decision to be mask optional this upcoming year at LHS. We believe this is the right decision for the well-being of our daughter as well as other students. We felt she cannot make it through another year in school with a mask. From Michelle Holmes. We would like to send our gratitude to the Board of Education and Dr. Herman for following the science and recommendations for allowing mask optional for the start of the 2021 school year. This is from Scott and Jennifer Gifford. Wanted to acknowledge our appreciation for making masks optional this year. We're very excited to have our student back in person full-time at LHS. This decision is wonderful as it allows individual families the opportunity to take any personal precautions they feel are necessary for their own children without inhibiting the rights of others. This is from Julie Goodman. I am a parent of a vaccinated LHS junior. I appreciate your wise judgment on making mask-wearing optional for students this coming year. Thank you for your time. Margaret Fields writes, I want you to know, I appreciate the board's decision to make masks optional. Thank you for all that you do. Kelly Williams writes, please keep masks optional. Give the parents a choice as to whether or not they feel their child needs a mask. Those who want masks worn can have their child wear a mask. My child will not be wearing a mask. He is vaccinated. And I truly believe masks are not healthy for these kids to be wearing all day. Thank you. Dale Sherman writes, thank you for following the overwhelming evidence and exercising common sense and not enacting a mask mandate for our students and teachers. The masks cause far more harm than they mitigate, especially in children. You may hear from passionate voices tonight that want you to reverse course and require everyone in the building to wear masks, be they vaccinated or not. I strongly urge you to reject those irrational pleas. You lack the legal authority to invoke a mask mandate, and there is no compelling reason to even consider such an absurd course of action. Katie Murphy writes, we would just like to send our gratitude to the Board of Education and Dr. Herman for following the science and recommendations by allowing masks to be optional at the start of the new school year. Thank you. Joey Bach writes, thank you to the D-128 and Dr. Kalentis for all the Herculean efforts in getting the student body and district to where we were in May and through the summer. The outcries of the student body and families who were in need of getting back to some normalcy were heard. Completing the school year with activities and in-person graduation helped the students' mental health tremendously, and LHS families applaud you for that. With mental health in mind, we appreciate the district continuing positive momentum and keeping the mask optional policy. Jennifer Lauren Burkhardt writes, thank you for allowing this opportunity for a choice. Given the choice, our kids would not be wearing a mask, and that is where we are standing on the issue. No masks for kids. Just wanted to make you aware of this. Carrie and Patrick Patton write, thank you for your recent decision to make masks optional for D-128 students next year. My son will be fully vaccinated by the time school starts, and there is no need to require masks. Please maintain your decision. It is the best thing for the kids. Scott and Jennifer Gifford wanted to acknowledge our appreciation for making masks optional this year. We're very excited to have our student back in person full-time at LHS. This decision is wonderful as it allows individual families the opportunity to take any personal precautions they feel are necessary for their own children without inhibiting the rights of others. Excuse me. Brooke Dawes writes, I am a mother of a rising sophomore. My daughter missed out on the last half of eighth grade as well as the normal year start to high school, freshman year, due to the unfortunate decisions that caused LHS to open remotely. I am writing to thank you for following the science this year and for making the decision for D-128 to be mask optional. My daughter is fully vaccinated, and there is absolutely no reason for her to wear a mask. I also support students and teachers who are unvaccinated going maskless if they choose to do so. I do not support mandatory forced vaccinations or forced masking of anyone, especially when students upon, I'm sorry, studies upon countless studies have shown it is not necessary in schools. I'm sure you will be hearing from many people who want everyone, including vaccinated individuals, to wear masks. I would venture to guess these are the same people that insisted on forcing their choice for remote school for all the majority of last year and who are absolutely responsible for my daughter and all other students missing out on a normal start to high school thanks to their irrational partisan proven-to-be-unfounded fears of COVID. Please do not let those who squawk the loudest make the decisions for everyone. I implore every member of the board to remember that they were appointed to work for the students and parents, not the teachers' union. Dr. Herman, I implore you to please stand strong in your decision to allow mask choice and for all to follow the science. On that note, the Delta variant has proven to be covered by the vaccine and is only spreading strongly in communities with low vaccination rates. Our community is not one of those. Again, as a parent of a daughter who is vaccinated, I support all individuals' choice, right, to choose whether or not they mask themselves. The vaccine works, masks are not necessary, end of story. Elise Mann writes, thank you to the board for the continued support of kids and teachers in our district. Our family supports the decision to have a choice on whether to wear a mask in the fall. And the following letter was also sent not to be read, and that will be in your packet. Andy Burkhardt writes, thank you for the hard work you do in supporting our schools and, most importantly, our children. I am proud to say I have two students that have been recent graduates of D-128 LHS. I firmly believe it's one of the best school systems in the country. With a daughter starting her sophomore year in the school, I wanted to share my opinion that our family is strongly against some of the continued regulations that are being proposed for the upcoming school year. We are firmly against vaccination of children for an unproven shot. Furthermore, we are against requirements for those that don't believe in a shot to require wearing a mask. We ask that you consider following proven science first and a health lifestyle as the best measure for moving forward. Thank you again for all that you do. Cheryl Carroll writes, I would like to thank and support the school board for offering a choice for students whether to wear a mask in the upcoming school year. Brandy Bennett. On behalf of my junior and freshman students, we say thank you. Knowing that there is no evidence basis for masking students, it's a relief to know our students will have a choice without feeling of guilt, discrimination, and judgments. With a school that prides themselves on their daring mission, it's nice to know they practice what they preach. We know through evidence-based studies, youth are at the lowest risk of COVID. Being in a school district that isn't using emotion and pressure to attempt to make this choice for all students and parents is very refreshing. We know parents will do what they see best for their own children when it comes to their health. It's not a school's job to do that for them, so thank you. You may not hear it enough, but you do have a large amount who are very happy with how Libertyville will be moving forward. We are all ready to move on from this topic and focus on what really matters, the students and the quality in-person learning. Thank you. Kyle Martin writes, please do not force children to wear masks. It should be up to the parents and their family's situation. If you want to see the vaccination rates drop, then mandate masks for all. Think about it. Why would anyone who was on the fence about getting vaccinated get a vaccination if they were forced to wear masks anyway? There is no motivation to get vaccinated. Keep other safety protocols, but there is no science to keep children masked at this point in time. Children are not the prime spreaders of COVID. Schools are for education, and they have already lost so much time. Parents can make their own individual health choices, and there is no motivation to vaccinate if masks are forced. Please do the right thing. Not out of fear, but reasonable thinking and true science statistics for this area at this time. Thank you. And the final letter is from Anna Filoninko. Greetings. First of all, I hope my letter has found you in good health and mood because those rules and regulations you are going to sign today will be leading our lives. I know it's difficult for you, but please decide with your mind, not emotions. Our children's lives and our parents' lives depend on you. Second, I thank you very much for making masks optional. It's extremely important to give people a choice. As a former Soviet citizen, I beg you, literally beg you, to give people a choice. If not, it's going to be a slippery slope. It always starts out with good intention but finishes as a collapsed totalitarian state. It's just a matter of time, always. Third, and most important for me, I am a mother of a student with autism. You can verify with a nurse what I am about to tell you. The school made my son's first year in high school miserable. The teachers and a nurse kept pushing a COVID test, multiple doctor evaluations, and forcing to threat, I'm sorry, forcing to treat what was untreatable, a tic, a motor tic, causing a terrible cough. It was because of the stress the school put my son under. Those masks, tests, e-learning are seriously detrimental for special needs students. Special needs children overreact to stress. Please don't make my son and all the special needs students go through the nightmare again. Keep masks optional. Keep vaccines optional. The science is, the science is on the choice, not fear side. Thanks in advance. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you for your patience. We'd like to invite you to begin public comment. As you already know, we ask you to maintain a three-minute limit. I'm flexible. If you only have a few comments left, I'll let you wrap up. There's no reason to be exact about it, but I would like to respect everybody's time because we do have so many people that want to talk. Finally, I do invite you to consider if somebody who has spoken before you has said exactly what you want to say, you have the option of stating your name and just amplifying their points. That's an option to consider. But if you'd like to begin, just all you have to do is state your name, and then we will be happy to hear your comments.
Hello. I'm going to bring this down because I'm short. Hello, my name is Deana Hanbury. My husband, Anson, and I have three kids at LHS. Can you hear me now?
Much better, thank you.
Awesome. I said I'm Deana Hanbury. My husband and I have three kids in LHS this. My husband and I have three kids in LHS this fall, senior, junior and a freshman. And we have two more in District seventy. I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to come and share our convictions with you. Thank you for everyone else who's come out as well. I would like to say to the board, thank you for making the decision to go mask optional this year. Thank you very much. I make our request known that whatever happens with the virus this year, Delta, what have you. We ask that you would remain mask optional. We are able to assess the risk for our family and decide, thank you. I mentioned this before, but I'm gonna take a few seconds to just kind of elaborate. The story I'd like to share with you in May, my eighth grader. He's five six, he's like, you know, manly size. He was in band rehearsal playing his bass clarinet while wearing a mask. He felt warm and hot and dizzy. He passed out while the instrument was still in his mouth. He hit the floor from a standing position with a bass clarinet. I'd like to like hit that home with you, parents. That's a big deal. It was a traumatic event. That he woke up, the whole student bodies around him, they're freaking out. Because he just passed out. He's been playing band for years, has never passed out, I'll add that. So I want to ask where, what about his right to breathe free air while he's playing an instrument? Doesn't he have a right to breathe while he's doing extracurricular activity? Tonight, he's there playing in marching band. Please, for the sake of these students, can they, can they participate without being masked? And I'd like to say, what about his increased risk for an injury? Like, I've had serious concussive issues with my children. I've walked that long road. Going to specialists, like, are you guys going to be liable for all of that that happens because they were wearing a mask? So I ask you, please, on behalf of my student who's in band. And I have a wrestler and I have, they're involved. Can we take the mask off while we're doing stuff? Please, I, all this is with a please and a thank you. You know, it takes a lot of oomph to get up here and speak, so I'm not yelling at you, okay?
And we appreciate that, we are at the three minute mark, so if you can wrap it up, we'd appreciate it.
That was three minutes, get out of here.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
So I second. Fast, right?
Yes, I second the CRT agenda. I don't want to teach our kids to judge someone on the basis of the color of their skin. How about the character and their work ethic, all that was mentioned. The other thing I want to say, we don't want to have biological boys in the girls locker rooms. Biological girls in the boys locker rooms. Last thing, and I'm done. We believe that the flag of the United States of America stands for freedom, not oppression. And when we say the pledge, we stand for the pledge. My students have told me there are LHS students who sit and talk during the pledge. I would like to say that, that's not okay. That's not okay in our country.
Okay.
Thank you for listening.
Bye. Thank you.
My name is Janice Scott, I'm a concerned parent in the area.
Do you mind moving the microphone just a little closer, just so we can hear everything you say? We don't want to miss anything.
I know you guys have already come to a decision, but this is just a reminder in case it comes up again. I'm actually not here asking for your permission or consideration. I'm not looking for your allowances of what you think you authorize for me and my family. Why? Because I am the parent, the guardian and the protector of my family and offspring. I know this to be true because instincts, society and the law tells me so. We are still following the law, right? It's the general jurisprudence that policy does not supersede laws. For example, the constitution guarantees equal protection under the law to all people. No state can deprive any person of life, liberty or property without due process of law. Which is what you all will be doing by segregating, testing and masking our offspring. The Bill of Rights also protects our speech, religion and right to assemble. All these laws correlate here because they all require our offspring to be given equal educational opportunity, no matter what. You see, the government has only two jobs. One, protect private rights. Two, governed by consent. You are public officials, these are your priorities as well. Illinois state law specifically says. That it's unlawful for any person, public or private institution, public official, that's you. To discriminate against any person in any manner. Because of such person, persons conscientious refusal to receive, obtain, accept, accept, perform, assist, counsel, suggest, recommend, refer or participate in any way. In any particular form of healthcare services contrary to his or her own conscience. Do you actually believe that by not wearing a mask, not being vaccinated and not testing is making others sick or putting them at risk? If that's the case, then by law, you need to prove that. You all need to prove that we are a public health threat and that you can lawfully treat us as such. According to the laws that you claim to follow, you don't get to treat others this way just because you think they are a threat. You must go through the proper legal channels to do so. Parents, please continue to educate your offspring every chance you get. Because politics are playing medicine and certain ideologies have moved into our schools. These institutions cannot be trusted to have our offspring's best interest at heart. Please teach them to stand up for themselves. Teach them about their inalienable rights. Teach them to be compassionate as well as passionate about fair and equal treatment. To know right from wrong and to stand up to the wrong. John Stuart Mill said in eighteen sixty seven during an inaugural, inaugural address. In short, evil triumphs when good men do nothing. The thing is, all you boards have been asked to have mercy on our offspring while you debate about a decision on masks.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, we are at three minutes.
I'm almost done.
Okay.
Testing and segregation, but we do not have to ask and there shouldn't even be a debate. We really hope you follow the laws because the people aren't going to keep standing up, standing for the unlawfulness. You have been put on notice.
Evening, my name is Carl Renard, I've been a resident of this district for thirteen years. Son's gone through it now, quite, he's on his own in Milwaukee. Anyway, I'm gonna be a contrarian here. I think you should have everybody wear a mask. That way, there's no discrimination between any one group or another. Everybody's equal. And yes, that has been proven, it's been proven. That the Delta variant will transmit to people who have been vaccinated. So you know you've been vaccinated, you need to wear the mask, unless you're gonna take that home to everybody else. So everybody's mask, how is that not equal? Let me ask you that. Everybody's the same. And teaching our kids to stand up, protect themselves, yes, let's protect, have them stand, have them stand, protect themselves, have them wear a mask. If they're eligible, get vaccinated. I didn't go one step farther. I would say that every teacher, person that's in contact with students, even administration. Must be vaccinated, or else they're not allowed to teach in the school. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Robin Sherman. I have three kids that are in D seventy and D one twenty eight. And I would like to counter. That in the, what I'd like to say is. Making every child equal by wearing a mask is not making every child equal. A lot of parents in this room. Do not have direct experience right now with what children are going through. Either your children have successfully graduated and not dealt with this firsthand. Or you don't have situations in which I deal with. I do behavioral therapy. I work with children from the ages of three to eighteen. These masks are doing a huge disservice to these poor children. The other day I was working with a child, trying to get him to perform an activity that he needed to do. After weeks of working with this child, he finally achieved his task. And I was so excited and telling him what a great job he did, giving him as much verbal praise that I possibly could. It wasn't until I pulled my mask down, he saw me actually smile and saw how happy I was. The reaction that he gave me. Broke my heart. Because he was so excited to actually see my face. That all this verbal praise I've been giving him just doesn't register. And this doesn't register for many of these kids, they need to see our faces. They need to see our lips move to understand communication, to understand. Feelings that come through our. Facial expressions. So every child wearing a mask does not make them all equal because everyone learns differently. And by making them wear a mask and not be able to learn to their full potential is not what education is about. We are trying to protect them. In ways that are not even possible, there are viruses that have existed for years, they will exist, we have to learn to exist with them. Thank you.
Good evening, can you guys hear me? Yeah. Good evening, my name is Shane Zane, I am a graduate of D one twenty eight as well as a local teacher. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Per the proposed twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year plan, I am grateful that D one twenty eight is giving all students and staff the choice to wear masks. I want to remind the board that for the students in the age group zero to seventeen, their survival rate as a percentage is ninety nine point nine nine percent. And for the age group zero to sixty four, including students and staff, their survival rate is ninety nine point five eight percent. In addition, the highest quality studies and trials, the randomized control trials, meta-analyses and systematic reviews conclude that there is no statistically significant difference between wearing a mask. Or not in preventing the spread of respiratory illnesses such as influenza or coronavirus. I urge the board to support masks being a choice for all students and staff at District one twenty eight. I understand as of now, D one twenty is not requiring students or staff to get the emergency use authorized vaccines. However, I want to emphasize the importance of the vaccines always being a choice for all. Are the vaccines safe? As of July sixteenth, there have been over six thousand deaths from the COVID vaccine reported to the VAERS reporting system. In addition, the FDA as well as a Harvard study estimate that only between one to ten percent of all vaccine adverse events are reported. The implications of that are the true number of deaths is somewhere between sixty thousand and six hundred thousand and counting. And as with any vaccine adverse events are heavily underreported. With all the known and unknown risks as of now, what is the true risk to benefit ratio for children in District one twenty eight? Are the vaccines effective? If we now know that the chance of survival for most people is above ninety nine point five percent. Now does a vaccine that toots that it is ninety five percent effective at preventing serious symptomatic COVID seem that effective? At a previous board meeting, someone mentioned that with the vaccine now available, we will keep an eye on the metrics regarding cases to observe. And while that may be a valid statement, the issue comes down to the accuracy of data. Breakthrough cases are normally defined as COVID cases that occur among people who have already been vaccinated. However, as of May fourteenth, the CDC quietly changed their policy to only report vaccine breakthrough cases that result in hospitalization or death. If people in the general population are unaware of this change in definition, then it naturally appears that the number of cases are declining. But is that due to an actual decline in cases or is it manipulation of the data without full public awareness? Finally, connecting the dots between masks and vaccine. From the beginning of this, most people were told and believed that everyone needs to wear a mask to protect not only themselves. But also to protect others regardless of if they were healthy or not because of supposed asymptomatic transmission. Remember, if you are vaccinated, the endpoint is to prevent symptomatic COVID, which means that those vaccinated could still have the virus and transmit. Is it not under the same logic that vaccinated or not, if you're asymptomatic? Your viral load must be so low that you yourself are not manifesting symptoms and very likely cannot transmit to other people? Where is the consistency with their own reasoning? I urge the board to put illogical fears aside and truly dig deep into the truth to make the best decisions on behalf of everyone in the community. Censorship is happening all around the world seeking to hide the truth. Nascent vaccine should always be a choice for all families. When there's a risk, there must be a choice, the truth will always win, thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Peter Zhang and I am a VHS student. First, I would like to welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Denise Herman, to District one twenty eight. I would also like to thank all those involved for making masks optional for all students as outlined in the Culture of Care Plan. However, I want to focus on the issue of the PCR test. From the beginning, the FDA and CDC claimed that the PCR test was intended to specifically detect SARS-CoV-2 RNA. However, critics of the PCR test reminded people that the test does not distinguish SARS-CoV-2 RNA from other viruses. But instead indicates the presence of virus like particles. Of course, these warnings were ignored and suppressed by the mainstream media and regional and local data would continue to rely on unreliable PCR testing. After sixteen months of using inaccurate COVID tests. The FDA revoked emergency use authorization for all of their PCR tests on July fifteenth, twenty twenty one. CDC responded on their website on July twenty first, twenty twenty one. By encouraging laboratories and testing sites that have been using the PCR test to begin the transition to other FDA authorized, authorized COVID nineteen tests that can facilitate detection and differentiation. Of SARS-CoV-two and influenza viruses. Why did the CDC have to wait sixteen months to deem PCR tests unreliable? Should we really be trusting guidance that changes every month when there have been studies that proving masks to be useless and PCR tests to be unreliable from day one? Why did our district go over budget and spend over five hundred thousand dollars on testing if PCR tests cannot even differentiate between SARS-CoV-two and influenza? Furthermore, mandating an emergency use authorized PCR test cannot be required for those participating in extracurriculars and who are not vaccinated. Twenty-one U.S. Code three sixty B B B dash three allows anyone to approve or reject any medical product under emergency use authorization. Which includes masks, vaccines and PCR tests. In addition, any medical discrimination that follows an individual's decision not to accept the PCR test is illegal. Under the Illinois Healthcare Right of Conscious Act. Which states that it is unlawful for any person, public or private institution or public official to discriminate against any person, any manner. Including but not limited to licensing, hiring, promotion, transfer, staff appointment, hospital, managed care entity or any other privileges. Because of such persons conscientious refusal to receive, obtain, accept, perform, assist, counsel, suggest, recommend, refer or participate in any way. In any particular form of healthcare services contrary to his or her conscience. Thus, it would violate state law to revoke a student's privilege of participating in extracurriculars if they would choose not to accept an emergency use authorized PCR test. I urge the board to make independent decisions for the D one twenty eight community instead of always looking up to CDC, IDPH, ISB or Lake County Health Department. Please remove the weekly screening mandate so that every student has equal access to educational opportunities and no student is discriminated against. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Randall Davis and I've been a healthcare provider for over thirty years. I'd like to thank you for the work that you're doing on the board. And I'd also like to thank you for your recent decision to make masks optional for students. I do believe this is a step in the right direction. However, I'm questioning some of the other policies and time and time again, as I'm reading them, I keep thinking that. It seems like you're pitting the vaccinated versus the unvaccinated in many different scenarios. It feels totally discriminatory as if the unvaccinated are being penalized. To me, this seems to create an environment of divisiveness and not one of unity. Is most likely affecting people in a subliminal way that you may not realize, but I'll leave that up to the psychological experts. Here are several examples of policy that I believe should be reviewed and changed to make it at least more fair. Masks are required to be worn indoors by all staff who are not fully vaccinated. When teachers, staff and students who are not fully vaccinated consistently and correctly wear a mask, they protect others as well as themselves. Consistent and correct mask use. Consistent and correct mask use by people who are not fully vaccinated is especially important indoors and in crowded settings. Weekly COVID nineteen testing will be required for unvaccinated students that participate in extracurricular activities. Weekly COVID nineteen testing will be required for unvaccinated staff members. An unvaccinated individual that is identified as a close contact with confirmed positive case must quarantine for ten to fourteen days. A vaccinated individual that is identified as a close contact with a confirmed positive case does not need to quarantine. There's new ample evidence now that suggests that vaccinated people are also getting the virus. So if a vaccinated person is confirmed positive, they do not have to quarantine? I'm questioning that. So now we're separating the vaxxed and the unvaxxed with a symbol on their face, a mask. Why? Is it really to prevent a virus from spreading or are we just following along with someone's idea? Statements like you are protecting others when you wear a mask correctly if not vaccinated? That's an opinion unless you can show me the real double-blind studies that really would back that up, which I have yet to see. These policies seem very discriminatory and again, seems to be a subtle version of coercion and influence to make people get vaccinated. Again, here we are creating a sort of penalty, if you will, for non-vaccinated and you are separating and publicly identifying them. What if a person has an anaphylactic history and the shot is contraindicated? This would seem to be very discriminatory. I would recommend that the board review all the policies that are different for vaxxed and unvaxxed and remove or change those policies so it's fair. At least that could give you a shred of credibility. The policies you have chosen to follow are very subjective. They're not based on science and give those who have chosen not to vaccinate for whatever reason, a negative impression that they made the wrong decision and it's a form of subliminal coercion. And maybe those that have not been vaccinated are concerned about the long-term ramifications of a brand-new genetic technology.
Randy, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Can anyone tell me the five-year outcomes? I'll be done in one second. Can anyone tell me the five-year outcomes with regard to autoimmune disease, fertility, death rate, lung disease, myocarditis? No, because it hasn't been long enough. And by the way, as of January or July twenty-second, the seven-day average number of COVID cases, if you believe the PCR testing in Lake County, was thirty and there were zero deaths. One last note, the number one contributor to the American Academy of Pediatric Physicians is Pfizer. So any statements from that organization I would take with a grain of salt until they can show us the actual studies and research that they use to formulate their opinion. Thank you for your time.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for making it.
Do you mind stating your name?
My name is Steve St. Louis.
Thank you.
And before I read the statement, I want to say thank you for making it optional for masks at this point in time. But part of what I'm going to read has to do with the fact I, what's trending and going on and the, some of the comments have been made already and talking about those other variants and stuff. So I'm going to go with that right now. So I'd like to talk to you about the limits and emergency use authorization, E A U's. My comments should serve as a warning that any policy, position, regulation, or rule for any individual to wear a mask as an intervention, medical in nature, for COVID nineteen for attendance or access to community high school, District one twenty-eight schools or facilities violates federal law. All COVID nineteen masks are not approved or licensed by federal government. They are emergency use authorization, E A U only. Federal law under titled twenty-one USC states individuals to whom the product is administered are informed of the option to accept or refuse administration of the product. E A U products are experimental and thus require the right to refuse. Under the Nuremberg Code, the Foundation of Ethical Medicine, no one may be coerced to participate in a medical experiment. Consent of an individual is essential. A federal court upheld that even in the U.S. military could not mandate E A U medical devices to soldiers. See Doe number one versus Rumsfield two ninety-seven F supplemental two D one nineteen, two thousand and three. In a letter dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, the Food and Drug Administration stated that E A U authorized face masks must be labeled accurately and may not be labeled in a way that misrepresents the product's intended use. The letter specifies that any labeling may not state or imply that the product is intended for antimicrobial or antiviral protection or related uses or is for use such as infection prevention or reduction. Every mask, PCR test, and vaccination related to COVID nineteen is experimental. Just in these past weekend, the CDC, as previously stated, pulled the E A U for PCR tests that has been used throughout the country since early two thousand and twenty. Turns out the tests cannot differentiate between COVID and influenza. E A U medical interventions are unreliable, not scientifically confirmed for efficiency or safety, and must be optional with informed consent. This board and superintendent's office has acted contrary to this in federal laws and regulations and has hindered the learning experience for students of this district in the past. Students were told they could not receive their free public education on purpose unless they comply with E A U masking, testing, or have received a E A U vaccination. Students and families were required to wear masks when they are present on school property or even while outside under the threat of exclusion, expulsion, or police involvement. Students that remain unvaccinated have been forced to receive COVID PCR testing, which has now been determined to be ineffective by the CDC. With all due respect, this district and its representatives has opposed federal law under your leadership. Informed consent, medical freedom, and privacy, as well as freedom from religious discrimination are all protected under the nation's laws. A district taking actions to force mask-wearing and COVID nineteen testing under the threat of exclusion or expulsion, segregation, or differentiation is punitive action against a student and family for asserting their federally protected right to refuse to wear an emergency use device that has not yet been approved by the FDA.
You are at three minutes.
Right here. Thank you. Based on the decisions made by the board to date, it isn't implausible to think that the same efforts of discriminatory and coercion actions will continue in the opposition to this federal law and harm our children, which is why is it essential that we speak today. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathy Collins. Um, I want to thank you for letting us speak and so that we could be seen and heard as parents in this district. I had four of my children go through this high school. Great experience. My other one was going to a different high school, my last child. So I'm just going to be the person who's going to agree with what I've heard, just like you. I loved how you said, just agree. And so I agree, grateful you guys are doing choice. I loved how the woman said, if you have to recome, come back to this decision, please remember, choice, we live in America, we live in freedom. I'm grateful, oh, I agree that the PCR tests can be unsure, recalibrated. I'm reading a lot about that. It's very interesting. So I don't know how to trust that PCR test. I've been reading about that for a few months. VAERS, I agree with hearing about VAERS. Are the deaths underreported that much? Lots of things are underreported or over-reported in our country. So that is concerning to me as a parent. I would prefer not to have critical race theory taught to my children in high school. Let's see here. I, my two boys are in a lot of activities. I do not want them getting weekly tested. I think if they're sick, I'm going to keep them home. If they have asymptomatic, why do they need to be tested for sports? I agree with all that that was said. I loved, let's see. Well, I loved all the laws that were stating, these are federal laws, constitutional laws. This is an opinion. These are laws that we all have to follow. So I'm just grateful to be here and grateful that you guys hear us and see us and all those emails. Great. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kim Ekrow and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have a rising junior in the district. And while the recent mask optional rule for students shows great progress, some of the policy positions listed in your communication are still functioning outside of the law. I want to talk a little bit about case law, statistics, and limits of authority. In Illinois Supreme Court precedent, precisely the case of Potts versus Breen, in the construction of the Act of eighteen seventy-seven, you can see the laws of eighteen seventy-seven, page two oh eight. It was determined that the State Board of Health has general supervisory power over the health of citizens but must be exercised in conformity to law and is confined to administrative duties imposed upon the board by statute. The limitation upon a board's power to make rules concerning public health does not authorize such boards to prescribe conditions under which citizens may exercise rights and privileges guaranteed by public law. The laws of Illinois give every child in the state the right to attend public school and there is not a provision that requires vaccination, masking, or medical testing as a condition to exercising that legal right. The power to compel can be justified only as a necessary means for preserving health. School directors cannot exclude or limit children from school except in an emergency. So the question is, are we in an emergency? Let's talk about that. We have three point two million kids in Illinois with twenty-one documented COVID deaths in children between the ages of zero and seventeen. The state of Illinois records a ninety-nine point nine nine one survival rate in children and a ninety-nine point three percent survival rate in adults under the age of seventy. These numbers do not support emergency considerations. Board of Educations are not subject to the State Board of Health. And while boards of education have some power, that power is justified only by an emergency but ceases when that emergency ceases. With a ninety-nine percent or greater survival rate, I would assert that no emergency exists. This board has no legal standing to adopt any preventative measures today. Now I want to move on to the next thing, school bus conveyance. The CDC issued an order on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one that stated, basically, if you're on public conveyance, including school buses, you have to wear a mask. I'm not going to read the whole law. But what the administrative authorities failed to recognize is that in that order, and it's stated on the order, that it's subject to limitations and applicability. Pursuant to forty-two USC two sixty-four A and forty-two CFR Code of Federal Regulation seventy point two, seventy-one point three one B and seventy-one point three two B in the Public Health Act and the Code of Federal Regulations. The CDC order is limited in scope to persons entering the United States from foreign countries and/or persons traveling from one state to another, meaning interstate travel.
I'm sorry to interrupt. You are at three minutes.
I am almost done.
Okay.
The order does not apply to interstate conveyance, so the district must lift the requirement for masking on school buses. Illinois government, including this district board, must stop weaponizing public education to coerce students into vaccination. I urge all district representatives to uphold the law and the rights of individuals with freedom from punishment, harm, or loss. I request the board to continue the mask optional policy for all students and implement a mask optional policy for visitors of District one twenty-eight following the laws and limitations of the state of Illinois and the federal government. I also request that you remove all policy directives that demand COVID testing for healthy individuals and masking on school buses. Thank you.
Hey there. So we might disagree on a lot, but I think one thing we do agree on is that the kids need to be in school.
Can you state your name, please?
Julie Simpson. And so whatever it takes to have these kids regularly day to day, you know, we don't need kids having to quarantine, having to revert back to remote, not only for some students, but for all students. I think that we definitely all agree that the kids need to be in school for a plethora of reasons. There's been, you know, quite a bit of misinformation tonight and facts that just aren't really facts. So I just want to read one thing from, well, a couple of things from the CDC website saying masks should be worn by all individuals ages two and older who are not fully vaccinated. Consistent and correct mask use by people who are not fully vaccinated is especially important indoors and in crowded settings when physical distancing cannot be maintained. And they go on to talk about the three feet of social distancing which can be recommended. And if all that can be accomplished, I mean, you know, maybe mask optional is the way to go. But I don't want to see our kids put in a situation where they're going to be back to remote and we're going to have to do what we did last year again. I certainly don't want that. And so whatever it takes to keep them safe and do, and then also came out from the CDC today, which I hope that you have talked to your insurance providers, that going against the recommendations could leave you liable if people do get sick. And so that's really a concern when it comes to my tax dollars as a taxpayer in this district. I've been here a long time. I really appreciate the service and welcome to Dr. Herman. But when making these decisions, I'm just hoping that what we focus on is long-term, keeping the kids in school, keeping the whole community safe. Moving forward, hopefully beyond this at some point real, real soon. I mean measles, polio, you know, many things have been eradicated by vaccine. I'm not suggesting that somebody who doesn't want to get vaccinated should get one. That is a choice. But sometimes choices have consequences. And we also, there are exemptions certainly for medical and religious, but people do have to get vaccines to go to school sometimes. And that's just a fact. So thank you.
Thank you. And I would ask everybody to respect, we're not going to interrupt people when they're at the podium. Please go right ahead.
Hi, my name's John Hetzel. I'm in the community. I have a family here. I think everybody's intent is the well-being of the kids. I think there's been a great contingency of parents here who have really expressed how they feel about, you know, what's going on. And I think there's been enough data and information provided today and there is enough data and science that supports a lot of what we heard today. I think we only heard one and a half individuals that questioned that data and science.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just having a little trouble hearing you. Do you mind just lifting the microphone?
So I do believe that a number of the parents here, all of the parents that spoke have had good reason to speak. Everyone's well-being and the kid's well-being, the family's well-being is the intent. And that's important. I think the parents that spoke here, the kids, every person that spoke here had a good reason. I side with the people who believe that the mask should not, should be an option if at all. But I had a couple of questions, believe it or not. So I'm going to leave it at that because everybody's already had a pretty good piece of mine that they've spoke. But I have a couple of quick questions I want to ask about the budget. Is that fair enough to ask that right now, even though it's been passed? I just have a couple of things I'm not certain about.
You can ask, because of the late hour, what I might do to answer them is have someone get back to you instead of engaging in a dialogue.
I just take note of a couple of quick things. First of all, I thought the presentation was very good. Your information was good. One of the things that I have to ask is I thought, don't you guys have an accounting firm that does a month-end review that might have caught that two hundred thousand dollar error? You know, I thought that was pretty standard to have an accounting firm do a month-end or is it all just internal? That's one of my questions. And then also, there was a lot of money that was saved during, in maintenance operations and transportation during the pandemic. And I'm just kind of curious where that money went or what it was used for. Because even today, I think you said, I think two point five million dollars in food service alone was saved. But the budgets are looking pretty flat. So where did all this, where did these savings go? I'd just like to know about that. And then there was a three point four seven percent salary increase and that's for new additional teachers, but the budget's like fifty million dollars. So that seems like a lot of money in salary increases. Also, the seven point four percent in Bennys, why was benefits, why was that up? I'm just confused. I'd just like to know. And then the COVID budget you said was one point two million last year. Adopted this year, twenty twenty-one's five hundred thousand and two hundred K for twenty twenty-two. So that means that just on the food service alone, there was a couple of million dollars somewhere, a few million dollars that was saved during the pandemic. I'd just like to know where it went and what it was used for. That's all. And that's really all I have. I think everybody did a great. And that's really all I have. I think everybody did a great job speaking tonight. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Hi, I'm Karen Jensen, and I have been a business owner in this community for 28 years. I have the opportunity to have a lot of children come to my business and speak how they feel about what's going on. And it's my job as a business owner not to discriminate against my customers, but it's also the school's job not to discriminate against the students and their parents. No one should ever be forced to wear a mask. No one should ever be forced to have a COVID test. No one should ever be forced to have a COVID shot or forced to be segregated or forced into quarantine. These are all medical force procedures, and these should, these decisions should be made with a parent and a child with critical thinking. Our children aren't being supported in critical thinking. They're actually being supported in fear-based decision-making, and that's not when we make our best decisions. And I would love to see us get back to letting the children be able to grow into good, healthy decision-making instead of fear-based decisions that create a lot of anxiety, depression. It causes children to withdraw. I am somebody who gets to listen to what people say, and it's, it's not good what I'm hearing from the children. And, and they feel like they want to have a voice and they want to be heard and they want to have a normal life the way that their siblings or their, the people that are older than them had. And they don't want to see these types of forced medical procedures carry into their future. Thank you for your time.
Would anybody else like to speak? Going once? You going twice? Okay, well, you are all certainly appreciated for your time. We're grateful that you took the time to come and speak with us and spend part of your evening with us. You are, of course, welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. As I noted in the agenda, we are going to move on to the president's report, the superintendent's report, and then our consent vote agenda. And I'm going to reiterate just one more time that tonight will be the last night that we read emailed public comments. We will continue, as always, to receive emails from the public, and they will go to all the board members when they are addressed to the board. Those are all read. So we will continue to do that, but we will not continue to read them aloud during the meeting because that was started when the capacity limits went into force during COVID. So we read the public comments because people couldn't actually come to address the board. Now that we no longer have the capacity limits, we're going to go back to the pre-COVID procedure where we do certainly invite public comment as we've done tonight, but we will no longer be reading emailed public comments. So we are going to move on to the president's report. I'd like to start off by welcoming our new superintendent, Denise Herman. Dr. Herman came to us from District 303, where she started her career after receiving both a bachelor's and a master's degree in chemistry. Denise became a teacher in St. Charles District 303, became a department chair and an assistant principal, and then moved in 2006 to Wisconsin. And, sorry.
I was just going to say you're doing very well with my resume. I appreciate that.
In 2006, Dr. Herman became a principal in Wisconsin, remained there for quite a bit before moving to California to become a principal in
Palo Alto.
Palo Alto, thank you. And then became an associate superintendent at another district before becoming superintendent at a school district called Roseville that had over 10,000 students and five high schools. Dr. Herman relocated in the summer of 2020 back to St. Charles 303, where she now gets to back in Chicago, spend time with two daughters and eight grandchildren. Before coming to District 128 this month, Dr. Herman served as the Associate Superintendent of Instruction, which would be in our district, the curriculum. And we are very grateful for you coming to District 128. You have been a passionate educator who has a proven track record of implementing social emotional learning in your districts. You have a passion for equity and for innovation, and we are just so excited to partner with you and take this district to its new chapter. So thank you for coming. We are so happy to work with you, and we welcome you to your first official board meeting.
Thank you, President Hetzel and the rest of the school board. Appreciate the welcomes that were noted in today's public comment. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. The other thing that I will note in my president's report very briefly is we are looking forward to the recommendations that were published on Thursday. Dr. Herman is going to give us a presentation and answer any questions that we might have about those recommendations for return to school. We will not be voting tonight. And we look forward to that presentation. And that concludes the president's report for tonight. And I turn it over to you, Dr. Herman, for the superintendent's report.
Wonderful, and I am very pleased to carry on the tradition of starting the superintendent's report with good news. So first up, we have that D-128 graduates Laura Zhang and Nicole Sladkov are currently competing in rhythmic gymnastics at the Tokyo Olympics. That's very, very exciting. Earlier this month, Jessica Giurella released her second novel, The Lost Girl. She's a, excuse me, 2005 graduate of Vernon Hills. And Timothy, Timoney, Vernon Hills graduate of '02, was recently sworn in as the new Vernon Hills Village Manager. So again, someone coming home. I think that's a theme around here for sure. Again, I look forward to continuing to share good news. Obviously, in the summer, we don't have students who are competing and doing some of the amazing things that they do, but when they return, I'll be glad to share more of the great things going on in our district. Next up, I'd like to transition to our conversation and my presentation of the Culture of Care COVID-19 Response Plan. It was important for us that we make that plan available to parents and the community along with all of you. So you had time to read it over so we could have a thoughtful discussion at tonight's meeting. I have put together a few slides just to guide the conversation, to remind us of the highlights of that plan. And then me and other members of our team will be available to answer questions to make sure that we are very clear on the nature and the language of the plan going forward. So again, this is a brief summary. All the documents have been posted and making sure that they were sent actively to all stakeholder groups. As was cited tonight, our plan is aligned with the CDC ISBE and IDPH recommendation. I know that there may have been a few things about if it was should or shall, but the wording that we used is the exact recommendation, and that is recommends. In addition, the CDC guidelines are very clear stating that vaccination is currently the leading public health prevention strategy. And again, while we are requiring that, we are going to actively educate and make that information available so as many of our students as possible who choose to be can be vaccinated. And then finally, as we saw here tonight, we have people with very strong emotions. This is about the health and well-being of their children. And so we also want to recognize that we are doing everything possible to keep our interdependence and our positive school climate alive and thriving. So all of those things were important to us as we put together our, our, excuse me. Brain cramp. Our strategies, excuse me. Thank you. We'll go to the next slide. So we will use positive messaging to strongly recommend vaccination for those who are able. We'll recommend wearing of masks for people who are unvaccinated, and we will continue to provide PPE as needed. However, we will not exclude, discipline, or suspend a student for failing to do, from in-person instruction for failing to do so. And in speaking with, again, the principals, members of district leadership team, and our attorneys, we really feel this is aligned with the CDC guidance. And we feel that it's allowing all students, all students to receive in-person instruction. And as many of our parents talked about tonight, that is very, very important to us. Some of the things beyond that is that mask use will be strongly recommended. People who are vaccinated may continue to wear masks. And I did hear from parents who said that that is a choice that they will make for their families. We will be monitoring the vaccination coverage. That is actually a recommendation from the CDC that we keep track of our vaccination coverage that that could inform any future changes we may need to make. We will be asking for students to upload their vaccination information. If families choose not to do that, then we will just assume that they are unvaccinated. In addition, the school bus transportation is actually a very strongly stated portion of the CDC guidelines where they don't say recommend, they do say require. And finally, we are having all staff who are not fully vaccinated wear a mask during school instruction. Next slide. I'm not going to read this slide, but I just wanted to remind you that in the detailed plan, we list several prevention strategies. And one of the things that's really important in the CDC guidelines is that they talked about layering these strategies. So you know that one of the strategies that we used very effectively last year was social distancing from having remote instruction or having the alternate day block. We made sure that we had students approximately six feet apart. With everyone coming back full-time, we are going to maintain the three-foot minimum, but it is less physical distancing than we had in previous years. So for each one of our strategies, we're keeping track of exactly how we're implementing it. We're keeping data on how any changes in those things are influencing our final numbers. Our local health department and as well as the CDC guidelines recommend making any changes to one layer at a time. And so we feel that with our plan that we've put together, we slightly decreasing physical distancing and then having masks be optional, all of the other parts of our plan remain consistent.
Is that chart the same one that's?
It is. It is the exact same chart. I just took out the middle column. That was the CDC language, just to fit. But all of the language that is on the slides is exactly what was sent to all of you and to the parents. Nothing has changed. Yeah. Next slide. One question that I did want to reiterate, I received some questions from parents about this during the quarantine session. So if you are unvaccinated and you have an exposure, those students will still be required to quarantine for 10 to 14 days. The nurses and healthcare staff will be the ones communicating with parents directly for that. We have worked with our teachers group, and they very much want in-person instruction to continue and want our students to continue learning. So we will be providing access to assignments and to instruction via live stream as appropriate for the teacher's lesson plan. And students will again be continued to require, to complete all required assignments. So I know that was a question. We are not going to be providing hybrid instruction, which was the model we were doing last year where we had students live streaming and in classrooms, and the teachers were designing actual, you know, almost two lesson plans in one. We are asking instead that they focus on delivering high-quality in-person classroom instruction and that the live streaming in will be an opportunity for students to watch, to listen, to hear, and at times interact with their peers. Next slide. Again, we are monitoring all four types of data that the CDC recommend that we monitor. Community transmission, and that will be across Lake County as well as in each of our zip codes, our main zip codes. I know we have more than two zip codes. Our vaccination coverage, again, that will be for both staff and students. The testing, the screening will be for students who are participating in our co-curricular program who have not been vaccinated. Again, the areas where we had instances of students with some community spread in our schools were on our sports and athletic teams this last spring. So again, that's us following our own data to say we are going to continue to try and manage the health and safety of our student athletes and club participants. And then finally, we will also be measuring any outbreaks in terms of, like I talked about, if we have a sports team, if we have a certain class of students, maybe the freshman class, whatever it might be, we will be monitoring any health conditions and making our school community aware of that, should that become any of a health threat. Next slide. And of course, you know, as is public, as is plastered all over the CDC guidelines, and I wanted to make sure it was in our message, but I verbally shared that with everyone today. Prevention strategies may change throughout the fall as the variants decrease or increase and as some of the access to vaccination becomes more increased, we may have the opportunity, based on our data, to either increase prevention strategies or decrease prevention strategies. And again, we will continue to do as the board has done and using data to make the decisions about the health and safety and well-being of the students. So I thank you all for your attention, and I look forward to answering your questions or hearing your feedback and comments.
Board members. I think first of all, it was a very comprehensive plan.
Can you talk into the microphones, everybody?
It was a very comprehensive plan. So, you know, at first reading, I could ascertain that you had looked at a variety of sources, checked with, you know, checked the box with, not checked the box, but you've talked to attorneys and done all of that. So good job. And it's such a situation, you can never make everyone happy. So. But the ultimate goal was to get students safely back in school, and I think that's something that looks like is achievable. For the sake of discussion, just so that we can evaluate all possible alternatives, I did want to talk about what would it take or what is a barrier towards making a mask mandated? I mean, you've seen CPS come out with a mask mandate as an example. And I'm, and I'm sure you've considered all of that in, in developing the plan. So if you can help everyone understand, what did you consider? And what, why did you not go that way or what were the barriers towards that? I think that'd be helpful.
I'll start, and then I'd ask anyone from my team to chime in if I think I've missed anything. And I think also President Hetzel was on the conversation with our attorneys also. When we specifically asked our attorneys about what our legal rights are, they reminded us that, yes, as a public school, we do have authorization to put into place procedures for the operation, the safely operation. That could be as simple as uniforms, and we're not talking uniforms today, but they use that as an example, that that's what this governing board has the authorization to do. So if we were to go down the path as Chicago public schools have of requiring masks, that is within the purview of Illinois Education Code. But they also said many school districts have been not just looking at what's possible, but what they can actually implement in terms of day-to-day operations of the school. So when talking with them, if we were to have gone down the path of having it be required, we would be putting in the teachers in the position of needing to potentially confront students who are not complying with it, take time away from instruction, then, you know, sending them to the dean or whatever might be the protocol that we would put into place. And we could do those things. But one of the things that the attorneys made very clear is we would have to be willing to suspend and/or expel a student for not wearing their mask if we were to have that be a requirement. And it was the consensus of our team that we did not feel comfortable doing that, that we felt we had any, many other mitigation strategies in place. And that our first point of order was as many students in-person education as possible safely. And we feel that the recommendation we brought to you hits that sweet spot and it also is falling within our legal boundaries.
Thank you.
Did I miss anything?
I don't think so. I think the only thing I would add is in the effort to make data-driven decisions, we are in the enviable position to have a highly vaccinated population. And we have, unlike Chicago Public Schools who have elementary children who are not eligible for vaccination, when we look at the data and what's enforceable, this seems the most, the decision that fosters a positive learning environment. Because that is really what we care about. We, we want there to be a focus on excellence in education. And we feel that this plan achieves that balance.
Thank you. Yep. I, I agree with the recommendation, but I know there've been enough questions that have come up from the community that ask the other side of it. So
Of course.
I wanted to make sure that we have that discussion publicly. Thank you.
I'm interested in some data. And I know we've had updates along the way, but currently, at present moment, what are our vaccination percentages for, at the student level, for the district, at each campus? What are vaccination percentages like amongst faculty and staff? I think, you know, obviously that piece of data was clearly one of our drivers in our decision-making, but I'd like to know those numbers and, and make them abundantly public.
We are still gathering that data. It was part of the registration process. And so what?
I guess at this moment is what I'm looking for, if that's okay. Thank you.
We will definitely gather that data for you.
Wonderful.
This is not, I'm sorry, we don't have.
I don't know who's talking. And I don't know who's talking. Could the person who's talking raise their hand, please?
Sure.
Yeah.
What other comments or questions from the board members?
I have a few. Okay. So we don't have the right to, we do have the right, but we're choosing not to exercise that. And I understand the reasoning and I agree with it, to wear masks. How, how did our lawyers look at testing students? Because there, there have been a number of people that are saying, well, can't test them. But we do have the right to test the students who are in our extracurricular, co-curricular program.
Yes, they were very clear.
Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. Because participation in co-curriculars is not an educational right, as is our full daily attendance. It is a privilege. We definitely have the authority to add additional parameters on students who participate in those. In addition to the data that that's where we had our, the limited cases that we had, were typically on sports and other club teams. So between the data and the, the legal rights, they recommended that, that, that we could move forward and that would be supported.
And they reiterated that we did have standing, you know, when we implemented that back in January. And that has not changed.
Right. I, that's, that's actually what I was looking for was to be sure that that has not changed.
Correct.
Okay. And then this one's from Mark. Hi, sorry to wake you up there, buddy. So one of the mitigation strategies is to ensure that we have great turnover with air handlers. And I did hear you say today that there was going to be a couple of areas, like the girls gymnastics gym, that they wouldn't have the air sock in yet, but we'll be able to turn over air in those areas. Will we be able to provide that layer of mitigation in those parts of the building?
Yes, we will. And that's the reason for the upgrades that we were doing for those 15 other units. The Fieldhouse project is going to enhance all of that, and that's why we incorporated the gymnastics gym as well as the weight room. You know, replace the older equipment, increase ventilation, return, the return over rate. So we've replaced the filters in the building, everything, every piece of equipment that can run on a MRF-13 filter has been changed. We are in process right now of, we've been getting deliveries all week long of our new filters. So we are going through the building and, and changing all the filters in both schools for the start of school. So.
And then we're going to continue the process that was started last year to purge air, increase handling, more fresh air.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna still run with the, the fresh air procedure and bring in more fresh air and keep working toward, and, and that program seemed to work the best for us. Instead of the air purge theory, the increased percentage in running our, our outside air for 20 hours a day instead of 24. So we're doing it and doing it early in the morning. So it's fresh air when you come in, doing it after school closes at night. So basically closing down just in the middle, middle of the morning. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Early morning after midnight.
And I'm sorry, just to jump off on that same question from Don, that's the same air handling procedures that we were using last semester, correct?
Yes, correct. Yes.
Thank you.
I have a, oh, I'm sorry. Were you not done, Don? I'm sorry.
Look at him, he's not close to done.
And then it's me again. And then how are teachers, like, are we providing teachers some sort of I don't know, technical support or some training time to figure out how they're going to livestream? Or are they going to kind of just go with what they learned in COVID and then teams will just figure out what's best for them?
Yeah, Rita's shaking her head if she wants to comment.
Rita's gonna talk.
It's all instructors' decision when and how to provide livestream instruction to students. And the technology that they would use to do that is exactly what they have been using over the last year. So in many cases, students might be able to interact depending on the teacher's choice and what the lesson was. But they would definitely be able to view livestream classroom instruction in, in a similar way to what was done last year.
Great. Okay. Thank you. I turn it over to this drum.
I actually wrote that down. I mean, we have, that was what I was gonna. The technology to support those. But, you know, I think the comments that I'm hearing in my own questioning as a parent is the concern of interruption of the student's program and the quarantine. And I think I, I misunderstood it when I read it the first time. So I, I would like, I'm hopefully, I'm not the only dumb one. So if you are vaccinated and you have been found to be in close contact through contact tracing, you will not have to quarantine.
Correct.
So the, I mean, do you, the fear of there being a huge interruption in a majority of the student bodies with quarantining in and out, if you're vaccinated, you wouldn't have to quarantine, right?
Correct, for the close contact.
Right.
Again, if they were symptomatic, then that goes down the other path. But yes, for close contact tracing and quarantining, vaccinated students do not have to quarantine, unvaccinated still do need to quarantine.
But to clarify, there will be a notification of all close contacts.
Yes, yes. The same communication will continue to be in place.
I have a question about the testing. I know last year's testing was, we didn't have the shield testing. That was not the, the option we went with.
And if you remember, I don't want to interrupt your question, but that was because it was not FDA-approved. So we held off and did the one that did have FDA emergency use authorization. And now the shield testing program that's being offered for free in the state of Illinois.
That's what I was getting at. I want, I want to make sure the public understands, we spent a lot of money last year on COVID mitigations and every single penny worth it, but this testing program will not have that same financial impact because it is free in Illinois. If we could just get a little background on that just for the public.
Yeah. So.
That a Brian question?
Yes. So originally they had offered only this coming year, the shield program for tier one and tier two schools, and then they've opened it up to tier three and tier four, which is District 128 for free, you know, testing for all schools. So we're working with them. It's, I, I think they're being inundated because they announced this and everybody now is, is trying to take advantage of, you know, obviously this free testing. So I've reached out to our provider. They also are paying for a third party to administer a test. So we don't have to administer the test. So, so all of it would be free, that the testing plus the, the third-party contractor coming into your building to do that. So I have reached out a few times, more than a few times, and trying to get that going. But I, I have talked to someone already once, but I think they're really being inundated and we're trying to get that going as soon as possible. And the one thing we don't know really now is the numbers of, you know, students or staff that we would be. I, I approximated it based off of kind of what I know for fall sports and based on those numbers to kind of give them an idea. And we just need to determine, you know, how many days a week at each school, would it be one day a week or so that they would come in and do some of that? So we're working on that.
Do you have concerns about the availability of the shield test now that everyone's?
Not, I, I don't think so. I haven't heard anything about that. And
I have, I'm just curious.
Yeah. And, and I heard it may even open up to some other kind of, by next now, maybe even being free. So I, I, I'm looking into all of that right now. So, but like I said, I think when they announced it, it was an influx of people across the state. So.
Brian, can I ask one more question regarding the shield? Will that be available to any student vaccinated or not, who would like a shield test done here at school?
It could be, yes. The, the, I think the thing would be just the sheer numbers of students that would be, you know, that could do the test and what they could handle. So if we have a third party come in and we would just have to determine, you know, kind of what those numbers are.
And just one clarification, the testing is free to us, but it's not free. The state is paying for it. And I believe the state is using a portion of the, of the federal COVID relief money that they received from the federal government. So we're receiving about 500 grand. They received lots of money. So I believe they're using that funding to pay for it. So just to, just FYI, it's free to us, but it's not free.
No such thing as a free COVID test or lunch.
I'll just add my comment since everyone else had a chance. I, I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I especially appreciate the alignment with our, our daring mission and some of that, that verbiage, just to sort of bring it home and, and really explain why we're making certain decisions the way we are. But it's really, you know, following the, the, the guidance of the the CDC, SB, IDPH, those kinds of things. It's, it's spot on. It gives those people that desire it, the flexibility to do what they feel is right. It also gives those folks that want to protect their students a little further, the flexibility of doing what they think is right. So I think it's a, it's a really good spot to be in the where or not, it's a more positive position moving forward rather than a negative or punitive position moving forward. So I just wanted to add my two cents.
Thank you.
I have additional commentary and questions if, if everyone will allow for it. Well, first of all, to kind of couple with what Jim just mentioned, you know, this plan agreed, very comprehensive, as Donal has mentioned, and well thought out, based in data, based in science, and it does not go unnoticed or unappreciated. I guess, you know, there, there is a segment of our population here, constituents I've heard from, we have heard from tonight, who while their student may not be medically unable to attend school, they may be faced with a situation within their immediate family in which that student attending school, though vaccinated, though masked, still feels a great deal of pressure or stress, I should really call it, a great deal of anxiety about going to school. And what are we providing in the way for those students? So I, I can just give you an example. A vaccinated student concerned about going to school and bringing home something unintentionally to an immunocompromised family member in the household. A parent going through cancer treatment, a young sibling who's not vaccinated and has other risks involved. We're not offering the remote option, but what can we do to somehow bridge for those students? Because I feel inevitably, we are going to have some students who are in that exact situation. Can we, how lenient can we be for medical requests for remote instruction? And I know there is no effective official remote program, but.
Right. I don't think that flexibility would necessarily be in it, be in how we define it. It would be in the services that we can provide. We have almost two strands. One is for students under quarantine and that would be the remoting in. And, and some of those things that would be at the teacher level. We also have opportunities for homebound instruction.
True.
And that might be more appropriate for something longer than 10 days or longer than a standard quarantine would be. So we do have procedures set up where families with medical conditions can continue to access coursework and receive tutoring from a homebound tutor to help students maintain progress towards their coursework.
Even if that child medically isn't affected themselves, that's available.
That's a tough question.
It's a tough question. That's why I'm kind of asking it. And you can take time, you can get back to me, you can think about it. I'm just, I mean, I can think of a family off the top of my head who's dealing with this right now. So it exists.
You know, one of, one of the things too, as we go from this past year to this coming year, you, you're going to have, you know, families and students that are going to struggle to come back in person, whether it's because of medical reasons at home or emotional reasons at home. Our social workers have, you know, been working with families and students. Some of it time over the summer, getting them ready. So I encourage families that, and, and students to reach out to the social workers, counselors and, you know, have a discussion. I mean, one of the reasons, you know, that we still have a lot of these, the other, you know, pieces, our strategies in place in the school too, you know, from masks to trying to look at the testing to ventilation, to even providing opportunities at lunchtime and stuff like that, is that, you know, putting all these strategies together is trying to make it a safe place as possible for someone that, you know, is coming to school and then still needs to go home. Maybe to, you know, a family member that's, you know, more medically fragile. And there's things that the, the social worker can talk them through that they still can do that has been discussed, I think in this past year for people that go to jobs and have to go home. So we're willing to, you know, I think the biggest thing is for them to, you know, reach out to their counselor or social worker and we can start that process. But looking at, you know, what's available to them, you know, as of right now, there's nothing, you know, the homebound structure or anything because of somebody else's, you know, medical condition.
One of the barriers on the one side, not barrier, one of the limits on the one side is I don't believe the law requires you to accommodate somebody that is not the student or the employee. Employee is a similar example. The law does not require you, a family member of them, it requires you accommodate the, the actual person.
I guess in our culture of care and in the spirit of our daring mission, in the spirit of us caring for our community, what can we do to bridge a little bit? What can we do?
So I know that there, that's an excellent question. And we have demonstrated in the past both the will and the resources available to meet individual student needs. This might be a difficult question to ask as a matter of broad policy. But I know we have a proven track record of really meeting individual students' needs. And that's something that I, I can say that we're committed to continuing. And some of those situations for reasons of privacy would not be something that we would make public for various good reasons. But I can certainly confirm that we have the will and the resources to continue doing that as appropriate. Is that a fair statement?
I would expect nothing less from the district, given our, given our track record, our history and the way we take care of our community.
Thank you for the question. Thank you for the question. What other questions do we have among the board?
As I was listening, the only other question that came to mind is, um, have you thought about any other metrics you might watch for that are internal to the school buildings? Um, and in one example, you gave was, uh, with the COVID cases that came up mostly through the athletic side or the clubs. I think that kind of sparked that question is, are you looking at what other types of metrics you think you might look at that happens inside the building versus outside?
Well, we will be monitoring again the student vaccination rates. Um, and we were in the spring monitoring transmission within the building, so we will continue to do that. Um, that, that really isn't a new mitigation. Um, I think that, um, again, for privacy rights, the nurses have kept all that information very confidential and it wouldn't be any individual student data that would be shared. It would be if we're seeing any trends about circumstances where transmission may be occurring. Maybe it's during the lunchroom and we might then in September come back and say, we've got a lot of data that says we may need to adjust some of our practices in the lunchroom. So it would be both places where we might keep track of transmission occurring or with certain groups of students based on, again, their close contact or something else that we might be able to change.
And that is part of what was in the packet that was published, um, both for the board and the public on Thursday, the list. If you remember this, um, that was in the, the last category, um, called outbreaks. A COVID-19 outbreak indicates potentially, uh, the transmission within a setting or organization and tracking the outbreaks in the schools, um, is definitely part of the data that's going to continue driving our decisions.
Yeah, and, and one of the things that, I mean, even going back to last year, um, you know, I worked closely with the nurses on all of our cases, whether they were, you know, students, staff and, and quarantining. Um, and we tracked all of that and, and, and we talked all the time. We looked at, you know, when they occurred. Um, and then when we quarantined people, obviously we followed up with all those students or staff that were quarantined. And did anyone, um, then contracted, you know, from being a close contact? We looked at, you know, all of that, um, and followed that, um, and that really, it, it kind of went along the same lines as when things were changed that, you know, um, uh, mask wearing outdoors was, you know, kind of, that was lessened and allowed more, even in sports. And it, it tracked a lot of stuff that we were even following within both Libertyville and Vernon Hills that we were seeing. So, uh, you know, um, it, it was just a lot of work, I think, by both of our, you know, all of our nurses at both schools and, and myself and looking at that data. Now, the next piece of data that we can incorporate in the schools is the vaccination rate. We also then look at our two major area codes, six zero zero four eight and six one, um, and look at, um, you know, the, you know, the positivity rates in those. Um, we like to look at, and, and we can't find it, but like the vaccination rate in those zip codes. And I've even reached out to our nurses again to see and they can't find it either. We have it by the county, but we like to, you know, drill down a little bit more by community. So we've been kind of building inside out all along and looking at, I think, all of that. Um, and we'll continue to do that, um, that when, if there is a case and we have to put people in quarantine isolation and follow up and see what happens. And, and kind of seeing what happens in a classroom setting, a, you know, um, a setting in athletics or even a social setting without, you know, outside of school and stuff. Um, we saw a lot of very similar things that I think other people have reported.
Everything that's been mentioned, I know both principals have worked with their teams informally to identify the places where that three foot social distancing is going to be challenging, much less six feet. And, um, providing spaces for students who are uncomfortable with that close contact with their peers. For example, a separate space in the lunchroom that would be able to provide a six foot social distance opportunity. Um, and monitoring the numbers of students who take advantage of that to make sure that you can provide additional spaces. All those metrics are also will be very careful, yes, unique student situations of their interest. On strength, how we're responding to what students are showing us they need by their practices when they return.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate the feedback and the opportunity to go into an in-depth conversation. And, um, we will be, I know there were a few wording suggestions, so we'll be cleaning the document up tomorrow. And then each principal will be sending it out with a reminder for parents on how they can upload the vaccination and to start our education campaign.
Thank you. Okay, we are halfway through the superintendent's report. We are now going to go to a summary of our COVID tracking expenses.
Yep, just, uh, for fiscal year 21, which wrapped up this June. Um, for the fiscal year, we've spent, uh, 1.35 billion on COVID expenditures, um, including a variety of things, uh, the biggest of which is going to be testing. And, uh, so of that, we, so of that 1.35 million, we spent 558,000 on testing. And just a reminder, just so we're that we're clear, the testing program we had was not a PCR test. It was the By Next Now test, which is an antigen test, which is different than a PCR test, just to be clear of what our testing program was.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'm sorry. I forgot to mention that.
So, uh, yeah, that, that was our, our summary for the year. We don't anticipate spending nearly that much next year based on everything we know, but this time last year, we didn't, we didn't know how the year was going to go and we'll see how this year goes too.
Thank you. And finally, we have a brief summary of the capital projects.
Okay, thank you. Um, at our LHS field house project, um, our roof deck is on the building and the whole field house will be watertight by the end of this week. Um, on Wednesday, we have a crane coming in that's going to, uh, lift and install the 10 rooftop units. Uh, eight for the field house and the other two are for the weight room and gymnastics. Um, these, uh, HVAC units, um, for driver's ed cardio gymnastics, uh, in a weight room, um, will, um, be started on August 6th. Those rooms are our top priority, get those completed up and running for the academic school year. Reconstruction of the West Elevation Shear Wall, uh, will begin tomorrow. Um, that is the shear wall where we, uh, had our emergency resolution. So we had to tie our roof in, our structure together, so then we could demo that wall and now we're starting to rebuild it. Um, and so completion, um, we're on schedule right now for, uh, mid-October.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for sharing, Mark. I think that's it for superintendent's report.
Congratulations on completing your first superintendent's report.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on, we've got our consent vote agenda. These are items that have all been discussed in committee, um, and they will be voted on in summary. So can I please ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda is listed? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion about the consent vote agenda? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Uh, in the restroom, should we maybe pause here? Is that possible to pause the roll call vote?
Yeah.
Yeah. We will take a brief pause because I did not realize that she had stepped away. My, my fault. We'll just wait for a moment.
We could hear from FNF in the meantime.
I think we can. I think we're just going to pause briefly.
I mean, we, we have to vote on that too, so.
It's a good point.
Technically, if you wanted to, you could still do the roll and it would just be an abstention.
An abstention.
Yeah.
But she's back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not at all. It was my mistake. So we are on the consent vote agenda. We have both a, a motion and a second to approve it. We didn't have any comments unless you'd like to comment. We're going to proceed with our roll call vote.
Thank you.
Sure.
Drumkey.
Yay.
Hessel.
I.
Kocarni.
I.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
And motion carries. So I will turn it over to Chairperson Batson for the program and personnel committee update.
Thank you. Um, first on the agenda for the program of personnel is the resolution to regulate expense reimbursements for board policies. Um, this, this and the next, uh, item are both things that we review on an annual basis. So, you know, uh, Brian, you want to give any quick background?
So, um, just, there is a policy that, uh, regulates the board members' expenses, um, each year and their reimbursements. Um, and part of that policy is to have a resolution each year. And I think part of the reason for the resolution is to make the public aware that you are voting on this each year, that, um, we're really not hiding any of the reimbursements or expenses, uh, for the board members and that it's budgeted every year, um, through our assistant superintendent for finance. And that's what would be in the expenses and, uh, reimbursements. And then the resolution on the next, um, prohibiting sexual harassment. This, um, again, we've always had a board policy on workplace sexual harassment. But again, to make, um, I think board members aware, public aware that we do have a, uh, sexual harassment, um, policy is to take a resolution each year on it. And, um, it's a good educational, I think, uh, item each year for both of them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll take the, um, the first one, uh, board policy two colon one twenty-five, um, first, and if we can have a motion, please.
Move to approve the resolution to regulate expense reimbursements for board policy two, one, two, five, board member compensation expenses and five, six, zero expenses.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the board members? Okay, hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Kocarni.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. And then the, um, on the second resolution here for board policy five colon 20, can we have a motion, please?
Let me make a motion to approve the resolution to prohibit sexual harassment for board policy five two zero workplace harassment prohibited.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Again, both of these were reviewed earlier in committee, so, uh, we already had some conversation about these, just so if anyone's in the public's, uh, curious. Uh, okay, so hearing no comments or anything, let's, uh, do a roll call.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Kocarni.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. And then the, uh, third item here on our agenda is a first reading for a series of board policies. We had this first, uh, we reviewed these in committee earlier in the evening and, uh, actually made some recommendations for a few changes on a couple of these. So these will be returning in committee next month as well as at the board meeting next month. Um, and assuming that we all, uh, agree to the adjustments, we'll vote on them at that time. Otherwise, we'll postpone it for another month while we make further adjustments. But, uh, just, I'll just read down the list here real quick, just for public record. Policy one, two, colon 10, uh, school district governance. Policy two, colon 30, school district elections. Policy two, colon 130, board superintendent relationship. Policy two, colon 240, board policy development. Uh, policy two, colon 40, superintendent.
Three forty.
Oh, I'm sorry, three, colon 40, uh, policy, thank you. Policy five, colon 10, equal opportunity, uh, employment opportunity and minority recruitment. Policy six, colon 160, English learners. Policy six, colon 235, access to electronic networks. Policy six, colon 255, assemblies and ceremonies. Policy six, colon 260, complaints about curriculum instructional materials and programs. Policy seven, colon 280, communicable and chronic infectious diseases. And lastly, policy eight, colon 90, parent organizations and booster clubs. So we will be revisiting those again next month. So, uh, that concludes the program and personnel.
You, Chairman Batson, I'd like to turn it over to Chairperson Rooney for the facilities and finance committee update.
Well, yeah, one thing to vote on this month, uh, rental labor charge rates for fiscal year 2022. Dan went over these in our committee meetings. Do you want to just touch on the ones that are very different from year to year?
Yes. I'm sorry, I was loading the document. A custodial had a significant change dropped down, uh, because the, the folks that would actually work there. Um, we, we had a number of district employees that used to potentially work there, uh, that, that pool has shrunk, uh, due to attrition, leaving, leaving the job, uh, and getting replaced by lower wage, uh, folks. So that rate is being dropped according to our costs. And then a few of the other rates are changed relative to the, the pay that we pay the people that actually work there. So sometimes it goes up because, uh, those costs go up. Uh, and sometimes it goes down because the people actually working those rates, uh, go down and get more aligned with standardized rates. So, uh, we try to balance between, uh, not us incurring costs, but also, um, not trying to, you know, um, make all of our money in this program, so.
And, and the comment about the question earlier from committee, uh, nobody got a decrease in pay that we're working any of the events. It was just, um, analyzing. So I work with rentals with John Fischel, um, and, you know, just analyzing who's working them and who we're hiring and making sure that we're not also overcharging the people that are renting our facilities and doing that appropriately. So we've had a, a chance to kind of look at that this past year, so.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I would just note that, you know, it's a service that we provide to our community and we want to do that in a reasonable, uh, in a reasonable way. So thank you for paying attention to those rates and making sure they're in line with what we should be charging.
Yes, our high schools are community assets and we need those folks to work those events so that our community can take advantage of that assets. All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the rental labor charge rates for fiscal year 2022, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Hessel.
Hi.
Kocarni.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
All right, that concludes facilities and finance for.
Great meeting. Thank you. Uh, do we have any IASB update this month?
Uh, nothing specific, just a reminder that the, um, the conference, the joint conference is coming up in November and especially for the new board members, it's a great opportunity. There's, on the first day, there's quite a few, um, items of programming for new board members and really helps you not only learn about being a board member, but able to connect with board members from other communities and other areas of the state, uh, just to, to learn from them and they learn from you. So it's a really good conference, so I'd encourage everyone, if you can, to, uh, participate in that as much as possible. I will be representing us at the, uh, the annual meeting. Um, so, um, voting on if you haven't had a look at the resolutions yet that were set out in June, I believe. I think there was, uh, yeah, uh, take a look at those two. Uh, we'll be talking about those later as we get approached.
I don't remember getting resolutions this year.
I thought they came out.
Recently?
Yeah.
Yeah, just recently.
Or so.
Huh.
Yeah.
I'll share a copy with you.
Yeah, it'll, and, and we'll review it again and, um, as we get closer to that time, because I want some feedback on any, uh, resolutions that, uh, we as, uh, every school board has a representative that represents them at this meeting. And we all vote, it's not a binding resolution, it's just position, um, uh, information, it's position papers, uh, sort of thing, uh, for the, uh, on the association of school wards and how they proceed in terms of communicating with legislators and things like that. So, um, we'll, we'll review those probably in October when, uh, when we get close to that time. So that's it.
And can I speak on behalf of Carol for a moment? Don't be like me and wait till the last second to fill out your form and send it to Carol. And if you did, I, you know, we won't judge, but thank goodness, last night I went back through my email at like 11:30, I'm emailing Carol. Hey, could you reserve something for me in the hotel? So cautionary tale.
You might be surprised, but you, you, you may not have been the first person to ever have done that. And Carol.
Really?
Routinely saves the day.
Yeah.
I can't believe that.
You know.
It was just Carol will never tell.
Right, that's right.
Secrets.
Exactly. No judgment. Um, well, thank you, Jim. And, um, I do want to note that you do, um, devote a significant amount of additional time as our IASB rep. It's important and we appreciate that you do it for us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any seat all update? Very quickly, um, there's another quarterly meeting coming up for the governing board on.
Very quickly, there's another quarterly meeting coming up for the governing board on August 25th that I plan to attend up in Gages Lake. So I'll have more information for you then. However, it was decided by the executive board. I believe they announced it last week. I'd have to check my email to double check that. But they are mandating that all of their students who are attending CEDOL schools, all that are able to don a mask, will don a mask at the beginning of the school year. And I, I clearly support that, that movement and that measure to do so, especially when we consider the population of our CEDOL, well, our CEDOL population students who tend to have very complicated health. So there are many students within that population who are further at risk or who may not be able to be vaccinated. And so I just wanted to share that information with all of you.
Great, thank you. And thank you for attending those and reporting back.
Absolutely.
Any future agenda items we'd like to discuss? Okay, well, the suggestion box is always open. Please reach out to Denise. Dr. Herman will receive any of those agenda items and we go over those before it's published. And your input is always value, valuable. Before we adjourn, I'm going to make a reminder that we do have a special closed session tomorrow night. We will not be voting on anything. It is for the purpose of board review, specifically a board retreat for team building. We'll be convening at 5:30 in the district office. And we look forward to everyone, it will be casual.
Yes.
And we are looking forward to that session. So without further ado, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Great, roll call, please. Oh, sorry.
Cole Carney.
I.
Rooney.
I.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
I.
Carmichael.
I.
Drum key.
Hi.
Estelle.
Hi.
Meeting is adjourned.